We're starting in two minutes, okay?
Two minutes?
Yeah. Waiting for the other colleague, Cabrera, who will answer. When was it?
In February or March.
That's already too good.
Sure. Too good now.
I don't know. Good afternoon, everyone. Finally, the day came. Sure that's it. Okay. Finally, the day came where New York City is making the move not to be behind all the cities throughout the world, all the municipalities throughout our nation. I remember being in Israel with a council member in Greenfield and the Rabbi Association and all the elected officials and be taken to the holy city. It was there where like four years, three years ago, we were invited to get into the scooter, electric scooter, and going around to some area. When I came back, I introduced a language to allow scooter in our parks. So that's how far I started addressing the importance to work around bringing additional mode of transportation to our city. I'm Councilmember Rodriguez. I chair the Council Committee on Transportation. This is the committee that the four bills are assigned. I'm looking to work with my colleagues that have been great champions in this bill. Councilmember Cabrera, Councilmember Espinal, Cabrera, Margaret Chin, and others. And the advocates who are here are saying, we need to respond to the consumers. Consumers are already using electric scooter and electrical bike. One of the person that first approached me with a concern around electrical bike was my great friend here, Councilmember Espinal. And we know that resolution that he had in the past started this conversation. And here we are today, working as a team. And this committee is committed not only to introduce this bill, the package of bill, where the three council members, we are the main co-prime. Espinal, Cabrera, Cabrera, Espinal, Councilmember Rodriguez, and also we have Margaret Chin also, who also is one of the first one who also adding in on this bill. For the past years, again, I have been dedicated to finding a way forward to bring electric scooter and electrical bike to New York City as a safe, green alternative to sitting in traffic. Riding the subway or for a quick trip to the bodega. Most people are not blind to the fact that we have electrical bikes and electric scooter moving through the city already. Many of our hard-working delivery workers use e-bikes on the route to efficiently move produce and provide a quick services that most New Yorkers demand. New Yorkers have been asking for electric scooters and electrical bikes as an alternative option to community, to commuting. Electric scooter and electrical bike will expand transportation in neighborhood with transit desert. Teacher that they have to walk 10 block from the training station to the school where they teach, they could be benefit if we have electric scooter or electrical bike. It will help reduce New York City carbon footprint. Additionally, we received 65 million tourists visiting the city last year, who also have a need for more accessible and affordable option. They've been in France, they've been in many places where electric scooter is part of their everyday life. They expect that New York City will not be behind those municipalities. As Chair of the Transportation Committee, I have made it a priority to bring alternative modes of safe, reliable, and affordable transportation to the New York City, to the five boroughs, to the midtown, and to the outer borough communities. The time is now to legalize electric scooter and electrical bike. As Chair of this committee, along with my colleagues, I will be holding a hearing very soon to disclose this bill package, ensuring that there will be real enforcement when it come to the pertinent laws. We want electric scooter and electrical bike in the city, but we also need to make searching that riders assert the speed law so that the new mode of transportation are safe for riders and pedestrian too. It is time we update our laws. I strongly support expansion of these alternative forms of transportation to spurhead the use of more environmentally friendly transit option and give New Yorkers more green option on how they commute. After many months, we have a bill package that will, one, make electric scooter, electrical bikes safe and legal. Establish an e-bike conversion program for those bike that are not compliant with the new law. Create a pilot program within the city for its electric scooter as a sheer mobility option for the public. Many thanks and appreciation to the Delivery Justice Coalition, made of Transportation Alternative, Asian American Federation, Bike Public Project, Make the Road New York, the Legal Aid Society, and American Delivery Workers Association. I also want to thank the Transportation Committee staff and the city legislation staff for the hard work and research on this bill package. Also, Transportation Alternative and many of those New Yorkers who have been strongly advocating for this package of bill. Today, we are becoming history. Today, we are demonstrating that New York City can bring electric scooter and electric bike to the city so that what they do to deliver food can be more efficient. Few years ago, at Rooting Center, I presented my plan on transportation. I called for a plan where by 2030, we should reduce the numbers of car owners in New York City from 1.4 million that we have today to 1 million by 2030. Bringing electric scooter and electrical bike will help us to accomplish that goal because we're going to be adding new motor transportation beside our trains, our buses, our ferry. It is time for all to move on, and it is my pleasure to call my colleagues that have been champions in this, with me in this package. First, let me call Councilmember Rafael Espinal.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Idonis. Thank you for your leadership as the Chair of the Committee. I want to thank Margaret Chin, Fernando Cabrera, also for being leaders on this issue. As Idonis mentioned, I've been pushing this conversation since 2014. And the reason I was pushing is because there was young people in my district who actually owned electric bikes and approached me and told me this is the future of transportation. There were cities across the globe that were already embracing e-bikes, but New York City was behind on the conversation. And unfortunately, because of past leadership, that conversation went nowhere. And what we saw over the past four years is hundreds, if not thousands, of delivery men be targeted by the NYPD just for doing their job and using a mode of transportation that wasn't helped them do their job in an efficient manner. We knew that we had to do something, and I'm glad we finally got to this point. The year is 2018. We are already in the future. We should not be having archaic laws in the way of allowing for modernization of our transportation system to move forward. Our MTA is crumbling, congestion is at an all-time high, people relying on bikes, and they're looking for other modes to get around. So a scooter, an e-scooter, an e-bike is that alternative. And the time to push this conversation is now. I am very, very, very encouraged to see the amount of support that we have received over the years from all of the great organizations that have pushed this and advocated for this. And I'm glad to know that we are in a positive direction and that we're going to be having a hearing on this bill very soon. And no longer will a delivery man have to be afraid of the fact that they're going to be able to put food on their table, pay their rent, and be able to sustain their families because they will not be penalized for doing their job. So I'm very proud of all of this. Thank you all for the support. I'm looking forward to get this passed.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from another co-prime of this bill, this package, but we three together are the one leading. Together, we also with Councilmember Margaret Chin, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you for your leadership. Congratulations on your bill. I'm introducing Intro 1240, which will legalize e-scooters. As you can see, not only are they stylish, and they're going to be a part of our transportation culture, but they're going to serve a real need, especially like in my community. I have a college in my community, and many of our young people do not own vehicle. How feasible and accessible it will be for our college students to be able to take their scooters, take them to school? It's going to help with the transportation problems that we've been having in the outer boroughs, just like we have in the Bronx that we see in spiking up. This is going to be part of the solution to the transportation crisis that we have in New York City. It's going to be affordable, and at the same time, it's going to bring forth new employment opportunity. Somebody has to charge them up during the evening time and be able to replace them in different locations. So this is a win-win situation. We basically catching up to other cities where they have been very progressive about their transportation agenda. This is a good day. This is a happy day. In Spanish, real quickly, me da un placer que vamos a introducir en este día la ley, Introducción 1240, que ahora los e-scooters van a ser legal aquí en nuestra comunidad. Una oportunidad grande, especialmente de los 50% de los newyorkinos que no tienen carro y que se le hace difícil a veces en otras modas de transportación. Esto va a ser una moda muy buena para que ellos puedan llegar a su destinación y ayudar en el problema del crisis que tenemos de transportación aquí en la ciudad de Nueva York. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from a great champion. This is Councilmember Margaret Chin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm proud to stand here with my council colleague, Councilmember Espinal Rodriguez and Cambera, and the advocates of delivery justice as New York City Council introduce legislation that will make sure that our city keeps its promise to immigrant workers who serve as the backbone of our local communities. I'm so proud to see so many familiar faces here today. To the advocates, Asian American Federation, Biking Public Project, Trans All Legal Aid, Make the Road, and delivery workers. I know it's been a long, hard fought role, but we could not be here today without your perseverance to change a prevailing, yes, misguided narrative about immigrant workers who are punished, fined, and harassed every day for simply trying to put food on the table and provide for their families. This does not match our vision for a truly fair city. Let's call this injustice for what it is. We refuse to accept a city that uses over policing as a short-sighted vendee for traffic safety reform, especially when the people who are penalized, the delivery workers, end up being the one with the most to lose. Today, with the introduction of this e-bike package, we are turning over a new page to steer a productive conversation about how we can achieve street safety without punishing vulnerable immigrants into the shadow. Thank you, Councilmember Espinal, for listening to these workers' stories and leading legislation that would provide them with relief and support. I am so proud to be part of this fight with all of you. Now, it's time to deliver justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from another champion in this fight, Councilmember...
Thank you so much, everyone. I will be very brief. I'm here in support of e-bike legalization. It is affordable, it is efficient, and it is green. And as we talk as a city about promoting alternative modes of transportation to really reduce our carbon emissions, I think that bike infrastructure is so, so important. This is an immigration issue, this is an environmental issue, and this is a public safety issue. Recently, in my district, a video surfaced of someone who was dependent on his e-bike for work, and it was impounded by the NYPD. That is just one of many stories of people who are dependent on e-bikes and, again, alternative modes of transportation that are better for our environment and our city that need these bills to pass. When I mentioned public safety, I had to mention recently a piece of legislation that I introduced. Intro 1163 would mandate that street work and construction make sure that they are not blocking bike lanes. It is so, so important that whether you're a pedestrian, a motorist, or a cyclist, we need those bike lanes free and clear to make sure that people can get around, that they're not suddenly inserted into traffic, and really making sure that we feel good about walking, biking, and driving in our city. I think these bills are an incredible move for as we promote green infrastructure. I'm excited to get my bill heard and passed as well, and I'm looking forward to trying all forms of transportation, especially as a proud cyclist. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from someone that I still cannot see as his new role, but someone that has been a champion on transportation, Paula Stilwite.
Thank you. Thank you, Idonis. As Idonis said at the outset, other cities are figuring this out, and it's not just Tel Aviv, right? It's Los Angeles, it's Portland, Oregon, Austin, Texas, Washington, DC. All of these cities are figuring out how to integrate e-bikes and e-scooters into their transportation networks, and they're reaping the benefits. Over 10 million e-scooter trips have already taken place in the United States. So a lot of data is coming in about how e-scooters are really providing vital transportation for more and more Americans. New York City can do it even better, right? So all this data is telling us some very important things about e-scooters. One, e-scooters are as safe or safer than bicycling, especially when cities provide protected infrastructure. In Austin, Texas, there's been over 1 million e-scooter trips, and the crash rate is very telling, half that of bicycling. So e-scooters are safe, and they can be even safer. Two, e-scooters are replacing car trips. E-scooter trips aren't just taking trips from transit or walking. In Portland, Oregon, a third of e-scooter trips are replacing Uber, Lyft, and private car trips. So they are indeed economical and environmental. Also, e-scooters are complementing transit. People are using e-scooters to get from A to B, but as often or more often, they're using e-scooters to go to that subway stop or train stop or bus stop that's a little bit out of the way. So we all know that's going to be very relevant to the L-Train shutdown. Finally, e-scooters are proving very, very popular. In cities that have e-scooters and e-bikes, e-scooters are seeing many more trips. There's something about e-scooters that's very easy, it's very convenient for people. And in many cities, people who are using e-scooters never even used a bike, but now they're using bikes too because they tried e-scooters. So e-scooters are proving an effective gateway, if you will, to all forms of alternative transportation. I want to say very clearly, e-bikes and e-scooters do not belong on the sidewalk. E-scooters and e-bikes must ride in the street, in the bike lane, and all of us are going to work together to make sure that happens. Other cities are figuring this out. We can figure it out too here in New York. Mary De Blasio put it best, I think, recently when he said, "To meet our transportation problems, we have to take an all-of-the-above approach." There's more demand now than ever for alternative transportation. E-scooters and e-bikes are a terrific way to meet that demand. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from Phil Jones.
Thank you. It's great to be here today. We are excited to bring true, reliable, affordable transportation to all New Yorkers, and not only just New Yorkers who are in Manhattan, but across the five boroughs. We want to make sure that people have these new forms of transportation, especially in underserved communities, because this is a true change in the way that people are moving through their cities. They're seeing different ways of lowering their carbon footprint and building sustainability. So we are very proud to be here today to join our fellow advocates in bringing this new technology to the city, and we will do all we can to partner with the New York City DOT and the Mayor's Office and the council members who are sponsoring these bills to get this done. So thank you.
Now, let's hear from Joanne Yu from the Asian American Federation.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Yu, and I'm the Executive Director of the Asian American Federation. For a year now, we have been working with City Hall, with our Deliver Justice Coalition, to make sure that while we, our city changes and laws are implemented, that we don't forget the workers. It is freezing cold today, and I'm, all of us will be using these delivery guys to bring, to make sure that food gets delivered because we don't want to go outside. This is their busy season, yet because they're using the e-bikes to do what they need to do to earn a living, they're being penalized. The punishment is, the fines are more than triple what they make in one month, and I think this is incredibly unfair. We are very grateful to our council members who have heard us, who have stood with us, who put this bill out, understanding the important invisible economy that runs the city. We still call on Mayor De Blasio to work with the advocates to make sure that this is passed, that we find ways for the e-bike delivery guys to be able to get their bikes out of impound, to be able to do the conversion, and to be able to earn a living so that they can continue to support their families. Thank you so much to our council members who are taking this really important step, and we're really proud to join their leadership. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from Erwin Figueroa from the Transportation Alternative.
All right. Good afternoon. Buenos dias, everyone. My name is Erwin Figueroa. I'm the Senior Organizer of Transportation Alternatives. I'm here today happy because the city council members have supported legalizing e-bikes in New York City. We have delivery workers, which are one of the most vulnerable users of transit and transportation in our city. We're happy that there's a path to legalization, there's a path for conversion, and allowing delivery cyclists and delivery workers to be able to travel throughout the city safely. These honorous fines that they're being levied right now on delivery workers need to stop because they are the ones, as mentioned by our coalition partners, they're the ones that keep our city going. And the safety and the strength of our transportation system is only as strong as their weakest link, so we need to rectify this and make sure that delivery cyclists and delivery workers are safe and are not being fined honorously. Some people have said, and media have said, that it is controversial, these bills. There's nothing controversial about safe, reliable transportation by e-bikes and e-scooters. We have right now motor vehicles that are going four to five times the speed in our streets compared to this mode of transportation. So there's something controversial about this. This would allow an equitable transportation in our city. It would allow people to be able to do last mile trips from transportation hubs. It would allow people otherwise wouldn't be able to bike, be able to bike and be able to transportation, to be able to travel around the city. But our transportation system right now that is in dire need of repairs, this is a stop, this is a measure that will allow people to be able to travel around the city in a safe, affordable, and equitable way. So again, I want to thank the council members today for these bills. All these bills need to pass together because delivery cyclists and all residents of the city need to have this type of protections. Thank you.
Any question?
I think that what New Yorkers should take in mind is that the danger is not the vehicle, it's not the bike. It's the behavior of whoever decides to break the law and go against traffic, ride on the sidewalks. That's what we should be focusing on, educating riders on what are the rules of the road so they can be better partners on our city streets. The vehicle, these e-bikes do not go any faster than the conventional bicycle. The scooters do not go any faster than the conventional bicycle. So again, it's about behavior of those who are using these vehicles, and that's what we should focus on instead of focusing on the actual bike. Yeah, so to override the veto, I believe we need 35 votes or more, right? And that would ensure that this bill moves forward. So our job is to at least get 35 cosponsors to be on board with this initiative. I mean, cars are always a big problem. Congestion is a huge issue. We should start looking at how do we incentivize New Yorkers to move away from using cars. And again, as was mentioned earlier, when scooters and e-bikes were introduced in certain cities, there has been less usership of these rideshires like Uber and all these other companies. I don't have those exact numbers, and I'll let the advocates answer that question if they can, but we do estimate that there are 50,000 e-bikes in our city streets, and they would all qualify for conversion if they do not meet the standards that we're proposing in the bill.
First of all, I think again that this is our time. Look, the question always comes from the media, why now? Because that's our job. Our job is to update our city. Our job is for the city to respond to the 8.5 million residents and consumers. Our job is to understand that New York City is the capital of the world. That 65 million tourists came here last year, and they've been going to places, to different places, and they expected that we are not left behind. I'm happy to hear the mayor spokesperson who say, you know, a different, something different. Two years ago, they were saying, they were completely against this, saying that this cannot be done. They stated yesterday that they would look at this. And for the mayor's standard, things have to be taken into consideration, how safe and efficient are our transportation. So for me, again, this is a conversation, we have many bills that we've been engaging for months. It doesn't matter like, there's going to be a process on who will be the one doing the pilot project, who will be the one getting, be the provider. That's not our job. That's the DOT's job to do it. Our job is to look on legislation that can take our city to the 21st centuries, and we have seen, we have heard from consumer that New York City should bring electric scooter and electrical bike. And as a Chairman of this committee, when all those bill will be going, as a co-prime, at the same level together with my other colleagues, I'm ready to work very quick on holding this hearing on this package of bill. Look, we held a hearing two days ago on many legislation related to sidewalk and curbs in our streets. I asked the NYPD on the data on how are we doing today compared to 2017 on people being killed in crashes. The data say that we are going, that we've been reducing. The number of New Yorkers being killed in crashes this year have been reduced compared to 2017. I asked people about, like, when they're concerned about the bicycle, that they go too fast, that when was the last time that we heard a New Yorker being killed because of a cyclist? We need to be sure that enforcement go hand-in-hand as we move this bill, but as New Yorkers, that we are responsible to update... Pero como los newyorkanos, que somos responsables de actualizar nuestra legislación, siento que con la NYPD y todas las agencias de la ciudad trabajando con nosotros podremos traer a cabo actos de aplicación como parte de este paquete de estatutos. Primero, creo en la tecnología. La idea de resonancia de Inwood, donde el centro de la resonancia fue alrededor del desarrollo económico alrededor de la tecnología y la salud. Siento que la ciudad debe siempre observar los intereses de los consumidores y estar seguro de que estamos a nivel de campo para todos. Cuando se trataba del rol de las empresas, siento que tenemos un buen sistema en place. El D O T ha sido capaz de trabajar con City Bike. Y City Bike ha demostrado que es una entidad eficiente y segura. Siento el mismo estándar para todos los que vienen a proveer un servicio adicional. Lo que sé es que hay lugares en nuestra ciudad, que tenemos muchos montes que es difícil para alguien que está solicitando, que está respondiendo a la orden de entregar comida en Inwood, que pasen por 190 en San Nicolás Avenue si están en Dagmen, que un scooter eléctrico permitiría a ese trabajador que puede trabajar en restaurantes de ironía en La Parrilla pasar por el monte de Dagmen a 190. También sé que cuando estamos tratando de atrar maestros, maestros que quieren trabajar en la comunidad de un desierto, uno de los desafíos es sobre una escuela ubicada 15 kilómetros de la estación de tren. Así que siento que expandiendo la bicicleta y scooter eléctrico estamos haciendo un enfoque sobre traer transporte automotivo adicional que, con suerte, incentivar a los dueños de automóvil a cambiar de conducir un vehículo a entrar más... El lenguaje es el lenguaje que ven en el estatuto. Estamos trabajando, estamos acercando cómo hacer el scooter eléctrico y la bicicleta eléctrica legal en la ciudad de Nueva York. Cuando se trataba del detalle de la logística, cómo la ciudad se trataría con la empresa que ganaría un RFP, ese no es nuestro trabajo. Ese es el D O T.
No, no estamos tratando de requerir a alguien registrar su e-bike. Lo que es el problema es que si el estado hubiera intervenido, entonces habría habido algún tipo de problema de registro con la DMV. Lo que estamos tratando de hacer aquí es legalizar estas bicis para que puedan ser clasificadas como cualquier bicicleta en las calles. Se reconocerán como un dispositivo en lugar de como un vehículo, lo que significa que no tienen que registrar con la DMV. Pueden usar sus bicis como la manera en que las usan actualmente sin ningún problema a menos que vayan más de 20 millas por hora y a menos que estén haciendo la cosa equivocada por los pedestrians en nuestras carreteras. Creo que la ciudad ya está comprometida con expandir las calles como parte de Vision Zero y como parte del plan de expandir el acceso a las bicis. Así que actualmente estamos haciendo eso, hemos estado haciendo eso durante años y no veo que esté cambiando hacia adelante. Quiero decir, eso es lo que estamos haciendo, estamos empujando, estamos creando más calles de bicicleta día a día. Quiero decir, esto no es algo que no creo que va a cambiar. No vamos a ver dramáticamente un aumento de ciclistas. Es una conversación que necesitamos tener con el D O T. Sí, no tengo esos detalles sobre cuáles son los planes exactos del D O T, pero, nuevamente, hemos estado trabajando en expandir las calles a través de la ciudad durante los últimos cuatro años agresivamente y no veo que esté cambiando hacia adelante a menos que haya un plan para aumentar y hacerlo aún mejor que lo que es ahora.
25 millas por hora de calles protegidas cada año. Ese es el plan que el consejo ha estado negociando durante la temporada presupuestaria con el D O T. Y los números más grandes de calles protegidas. Creo que, como presidente de este comité, liderando la negociación del lado del transporte juntos con mis colegas. Hemos estado pidiendo, siento que hemos estado pidiendo durante un año que necesitamos doble el número de calles protegidas que tenemos en nuestro plan. Mientras estamos preparando para empezar en enero negociando nuestro presupuesto de 2019, estaré liderando la conversación con mis colegas y el orador, esperando que mientras agregamos otro scooter eléctrico o incluso con nuestro scooter eléctrico, creemos que la ciudad debe ser más caminable y debe ser más amistosa con los ciclistas y necesitamos continuar expandiendo la calles protegidas y las que tenemos en la ciudad.
Y sabes, la realidad es que vamos a ver una evolución de más calles de bicicleta o más... Cuando tengas un nuevo tipo de vehículo que va a exigir, la cultura o el transporte va a exigir la infraestructura para estar al día con ello. Y eso es lo que hemos hecho con automóviles o cualquier tipo de vehículo que tenemos en la ciudad y esperamos nada más que eso.
Y la otra cosa es sobre, siento que la ciudad no está aprovechando al traer un porcentaje de los 65 millones de turistas a la zona de la ciudad, fuera de la ciudad. Y como sabes, cuando vas a lugares, a diferentes países, por primera vez puedes ir a Punta Cana. Bueno el tiempo allí, quedarte en el hotel. Pero va a haber un porcentaje de turistas que quieren salir, los turistas, para aprender más sobre la vida de esas personas que visitas. Aquí en la ciudad de Nueva York, el porcentaje más grande de los turistas solo se queda en la ciudad. Siento que estamos expandiendo el transporte automotivo adicional, en este caso el scooter eléctrico. La ciudad de Nueva York también tendrá la oportunidad de incentivar a los turistas también a ir por los cinco barrios, gastar dólares no en la ciudad, sino en la comunidad de un desierto.
Nuevamente, uno de los estatutos es un programa de conversión creado por el D O T donde alguien, así que uno de los estatutos que estamos introduciendo hoy es en realidad un programa de conversión que permitiría a cualquier ciclista de e-bike que tenga una bicicleta que va más de 20 millas por hora poder convertir esa bicicleta para caer bajo las reglas actuales que proponemos hacia adelante. Así que cualquiera que tenga esa bicicleta puede traerla, con suerte, al D O T y poder convertirla en bicis legales. Sí, vamos a tener esa conversación mientras llega el hearing y saber una mejor idea de cómo va a verse. Creo que la mejor cosa que podría haber sucedido a los ciclistas de e-bikes fue el alcalde en el comienzo de enero declarar guerra total contra los ciclistas. Eso motivó a muchos de nosotros y motivó a la comunidad a empujar hacia atrás y a explicar por qué esto fue detrimental a la comunidad inmigrante y a los trabajadores de toda la ciudad. Sabes, somos una ciudad que promueve la democracia económica y aquí estamos, castigando a la gente por ser capaz de hacer su trabajo y apoyar a sus familias. Así que creo que eso es lo mejor que podría haber sucedido porque solo hizo que nuestra coalición sea más fuerte y nos permitió empujar aún más para conseguir estos estatutos introducidos. Nuevamente, los peligros que todo el mundo sigue escuchando sobre los ciclistas de e-bikes es solo un estigma que ha sido vinculado a los ciclistas de e-bikes debido al hecho de que hay ciclistas que no obedecen las reglas de la ruta. Así que sí, creo que cualquiera que use, ya sea un scooter, ya sea un bicicleta tradicional o e-bike, si están corriendo en la calle, si están corriendo en la parte equivocada de las calles, están poniendo a los pedestrians en peligro y eso en sí creó el estigma de que de alguna manera los e-bikes son más peligrosos que cualquier otro bicicleta tradicional en las calles.
Bueno, una de las presupuestas para hacer un programa de piloto para los e-scooters y el piloto va a controlar cuántos e-scooters vamos a ver en la ciudad y yo creo que con el trabajo que el D O T hizo antes, con el apoyo de Edonis Rodríguez habíamos más calles de bicicleta en todos los condados y vamos a seguir viendo más. Y yo creo que con ese trabajo, la institucional estará ahí para los e-bikes y los scooters.
Ahora cerramos con un mensaje de Mr. Lu, que representa a los trabajadores de entrega.
Así que el señor Lu está diciendo que está muy emocionado de que estos estatutos estén introducidos y agradecen a todos los miembros del consejo porque los trabajadores de entrega han estado recibiendo fines severos todos los días. Así que comenzaron en 2013, han estado organizando. Cada vez que hay un fine de $500, $1,000, estos trabajadores no pueden pagar ese fine severo. Así que los trabajadores de entrega realmente necesitan esta protección y porque necesitan este vehículo para apoyar a sus familias y hacer su trabajo. Sí, él quiere agradecer a todos los miembros de la coalición, a todos los miembros del consejo para dar una oportunidad a los trabajadores de entrega para tener una vida decente. Gracias.
Gracias. Así que con eso, gracias. Por supuesto, necesitamos, no, nuestro trabajo es asegurarnos de que las calles sean seguras para todos.